All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Do you pledge allegiance?
I do.
I think so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have been in contact with Tannehill County Commission on more coronavirus discussion and our next steps that we should be taking. And most of them are pretty much at the, since we only have one case at this time, they are at an urge people to stay home recommendation. And it is not a demand, mandate people to stay home yet. If we end up with any more cases in Tannehill County, we will probably end up with a mandate to stay at home. If we end up mandating the stay at home, those non-essential businesses will be, will have to shut their doors to all of their indoor and lobby areas. So that would affect our salons, that would affect our Forsyth Furniture and multiple others. And so we are not at the mandate at this time, we are at the urge people to stay home. And in this, it's a resolution and proclamation of emergency by the Tannehill County Commission. We are in support of it, but that's what we're here to vote on today, that our aldermen are all in support of this resolution. And it names off the cities that are all joining in on the same resolution for Tannehill County. And I can name you those cities if you need me to, but this is not complete yet, because we are still having some that are entities that are still joining on. And so, but we want to vote today to be in support of it so that our, the city of Forsyth is on here. And so, and it has, it lists and exhibit the, basically essentials and non-essentials and what activities everyone can, should be doing and stuff and trying. But basically, what they're trying to do is what most of you are already doing, is just staying home. And they're just doing, the Tannehill County Health Department really would like everyone to, they're really urging and recommending everybody just to stay home if at all possible. And just to make sure that we don't end up with more than one case in Tannehill County. And I think Green County is up to 23 as of this morning. And so, anyway, they've found, I guess, in talking to some of them, that because that we had nothing really in place here as far as stay at home, we had some from other counties and other cities coming here. And so, we are, we felt like all of us together and all of us, that we, if we encouraged to stay at home at this point, then maybe some of those would stay away from here. That we don't end up infecting people that are in our, actually in our county. And so, so basically, I'm going to, and this is not gonna be, there's several people that are not gonna be a fan of this, but I am going to close the playgrounds as of, at some desk tomorrow. It just lives too long on metal and plastic. And so, we cannot, there's no way to sanitize between each kid. So, we are closing the playgrounds, asking people to stay off of them. We will lock the one up in Shoals Bend, it's pretty hard to do right now down in Shadow Rock. But if we continue, if the rain continues at that, it's gonna flood the park probably before long anyway. So hopefully that doesn't happen, but it's a possibility. So what I'm going to, what I'm asking is that the city of Forsyth has reviewed the joint resolution and proclamation of emergency from Tannehill County. I would like a motion to, and vote, to vote to support this resolution and proclamation.
Good. Just to be clear, our vote is only to put our, make sure that we are gonna be part of this process.
Correct.
We still will get a vote after we see the final, because this is not the final one. So how do we know something won't change and then maybe we, it doesn't fit our...
We can do that, we can do that.
So will we have to vote again to accept the official resolution?
I think we just have to vote to support it, don't we?
Yeah, right now we just vote to support the resolution.
Yeah, basically.
And then if there's something we don't like later, we can, we can...
Okay.
Yeah.
We can make some sort of amendment or more. Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Yeah.
With that in mind, I would move that we accept the resolution.
Let's, I can hear this.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, all right. I'm gonna read off a few things to you that I had written down. Once again, this is not mandatory stay at home at this point, you are strongly urged to stay at home though. If a mandatory ordinance does go into place, the non-essential businesses with lobbies or interiors will, still open, will be closed. And then all playgrounds in the city will be closed. There are no, to be no gatherings of more than 10 people, and a six-foot social distancing is required. If you go to the grocery store or any other essential business, you must maintain six feet from another person. You need to wash your hands, use sanitizer and constantly, and don't touch your face before doing so, if at all possible, in order to keep some of this to a minimum. And I think everybody's been doing an amazing job. I see everybody's, you know, I see so many people at home, I see so many family times. This is the time to put together a, anything that you could do that's family-wise. And I mean, I know people, a lot of people haven't done fire escapes with your families. Do stuff like that while you're at home and, you know, and having to stay there and not go places. There's so many things that you possibly could do. You still can go out on trails and walk and stuff like that. There's plenty of things to do for activity, there's hiking and stuff that you're not near someone else and not touching something else. So there are many things that you still can do. It's just, you know, social distancing is the key here. And so that we are not, you know, touching the same things somebody else is without sanitizing, so.
And if, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, the Tannehill County Health Department really did not want to be the ones that were making the decision of when, what was essential, what was non-essential, when to mandate it. They wanted it to be more of a decision by all of these towns in the county.
They did.
That's why it took this time to get all the people together to talk about it to, at length, at least to get this, you know, this temporary thing written up. So Tannehill County is trying to stay reserved as much as possible compared to, of course, Green, who they've mandated shut down now, and I think Christian has now too, if they've not.
And Branson actually has, so they, they probably won't be in this resolution necessarily and, because they are actually a step above us, they are mandating that there's people stay at home.
Which some people would criticize because maybe, you know, waiting too long to make the mandate.
It's really tough to get all of these entities together and on the same page.
And then you gotta think, is shutting down someone's business gonna save lives? Is shutting down one person's business, shutting Becky's business, is that gonna save lives? I don't know.
No.
You know, I don't know.
But if it does?
We, we sure will.
Yeah, so, so that's what everybody in...
Right.
That's why it's taken so long, because all these issues are emotional, they are emotional.
It is emotional, it's people's livelihoods. So it's, it's been a, you know, it's a struggle for this group, this commission, trying to make these decisions for the entire county and, you know, so, yeah.
Can I say, I know one thing that has happened over at Branson, is a lot of people don't know when the end is gonna take place. So like, I heard today, like, May 18th or something over there, but I don't think they really made that...
30 days it said in theirs. Yeah, from the date that they, they had their, yeah.
Is that what this is for too? Would this be a 30-day?
It has no date on it as of this time.
That's what I was curious about.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I think, like our proclamation already, does it have a date? Does it say 30 days? Oh, it didn't say 30 days, I apologize for that, yeah, as of, yeah. So it is for 30 days.
One second, please.
The proclamation that we did last Friday actually says until, you know, it's not needed anymore. That was for, that was emergency status at that time, so, anyway. But that was basically to, we've got most of our, all of our restaurants doing carryout or delivery or dry food, so.
So then at the end of this 30 days, we would expect to get back together as...
Yes.
Cities, at least temporarily, to see what...
If we're still in that, you know...
Or earlier.
Yeah.
Is it earlier, is possible?
Yeah, it could be worse and we end up mandating, so.
Or it could improve.
Yeah, or it could improve, yeah, yeah.
Well, hopefully that's the case.
Yeah, I hope so.
If we're cautious, we escape.
Right.
Is it just like a one person more and then that's gonna have to happen, or is it gonna be...
I don't know.
They, it's, it's, yeah. That's been, that's been...
It'll make a difference whether it's, whether it's a traveler that was quarantined when they got home or whether it's community spread.
Yeah, it's serious.
And if we have any, any situation with community spread, my opinion is to close it off immediately.
Right.
And that might be, you know, two people, whatever.
What about consequences on this, if it's working?
Right now, since it's not a mandate, there isn't any consequences written into this. And Branson actually has consequences written into theirs because it is a mandate. If we end up going to that, there will, there will be consequences in it. There is fines written into it. We have an ordinance ready to go if need be for us, if we have to mandate that.
Can we get a preview of that ordinance?
Not yet, I mean, it's, it's still in, it's still in process, so too. So we may have to change it, you know, beforehand. We haven't adopted an ordinance yet, so, until we have decided everything that needs to be in it, that's where, you know, but it's pretty well, otherwise, it's, it mimics a lot of this already, so.
What about the status of our police force and firefighters?
Status of them, of course, PPEs are still hard to come by. And so, but they have a lot of their, do you wanna speak for...
Yes, we have, we have some PPE equipment, we have masks, gloves, goggles. So with the N95 mask, we had some setback from previous. Fire chief had saved some of those, which has covered the fire department and the police department, but we're using those sparingly, kinda assessing the situation to see if we need to use those.
And are you on full time if somebody would have an emergency?
Yeah, we're 24 hours.
Still doing patrols?
Still doing patrols, still out there, remaining our contact with people as much as we can. We're still 24 hours.
What's your contact with people?
I mean, is, what is your...
The rules of following that, I mean, you know, a 10-foot rule could be a problem if it's somebody with a gun.
Yes, we're still, if it's, if it needs to be, that's our job. If it needs to take place, we're taking care of the situation. But we're not, we're asking people, like, if we go to your house for a call, if you could step out into some air and fill out a statement form for us, using, you know, hygiene, you know, washing our hands, things like that. We're usually in good common sense in this, and we're still taking care of business as usual.
And I think the fire department is doing the same thing, they're just, they're just kinda screening the calls a little bit better, not the emergency calls, but the calls for maybe a medical assist lift and things like that, screening that to see if they need to go in, if the person can come out, and if they need to be transported. If they don't need to be transported, they're gonna try to recommend other things like see the doctor and things like that. So they're, they're using common sense, but still they're going to, they're gonna take care of business.
So like, two responders might not show up at one site, is that what...
No, no, they'll all still respond, it's just who will actually get out of their vehicle and act and provide treatment, yeah.
Who's needed in the call?
Yeah, we really, unless Nate calls out and says, okay, all of you already in, in, in response can stop, he usually lets everybody come because they never know what's gonna happen, so.
And what about our city workers here?
They're all essential workers.
They're using six feet?
They are. Well, the way ours, we're set up, we're six feet anyway, so, or more than that, so. We have one at every office, so, anyway.
And I think, I think I can say this, that we talked to our police chief, and he mentioned that do more, definitely check doors as this is going on because, so that we don't have people taking advantage of this. So we're gonna, we asked them to do more of that, to get out and go around and check doors during this time.
Of course sanitizing in between, so.
According to the notification I got from our TriLax board, we are considered essential.
Really?
Yeah.
Has to be housing.
Is it? Oh yeah, I did see that, yeah, you're right, I did see that. I saw title companies and all of, along with financial institutions too.
Title companies are doing it differently, they're not allowing necessarily the brokers and stuff to come in to the closings. I had a closing on Friday, and I had to come in to pick up my check after that closing occurred. So they are maintaining their social distance, limiting their lobbies and things like that.
Everybody's doing a good job of that.
I think they really are, I think...
Or not everybody, but people I see.
For the most part, most everybody is, I mean, even Becky, you, I know that I discussed with you possibly wearing a mask while you're, and because of that, but you have individual rooms, so nobody's together, right?
I moved my lobby, I moved my lobby from the main room into the foyer there. And then I've got ionizer going, air purifier, and then of course decked out with, and everybody's six foot apart. You know, you do what you can, but I will say that one problem that I have seen over the last little bit is going to the grocery store, this minivan's pulling out, and everybody in the whole family's with them, and I'm just like sitting there going, why don't you guys stay in the car?
Could've just, yeah, same one.
Yeah, I understand some, but in the same sense, there, when, when the whole family goes in, I know everybody wants to pick out their own groceries, but let's have some organization where we don't have those issues, because it is a nightmare up there, so.
Yeah.
I've noticed that some are limiting their hours, like they've got senior hours to be able to...
I did notice that too, in the early morning after everything's been sanitized through the, after the, in the evening, they're letting the elderly in first, as, after a certain, I think it's a certain age or whatever, they're letting them in first, for the first hour, by themselves.
Well, I can tell you, I went to Walmart last week, and that was not...
Not happening? No.
And people were not ten foot apart.
Walmart is on Tuesdays, and they're doing their early, they open up an hour early for Walmart shoppers.
Wow.
And so it's, it's just on Tuesdays on yours, and I believe Sam's is the same way.
Okay.
So I mean, that, that's a possibility too here, it could be suggested to our grocery store.
Yeah, that is true, I think Dollar General is already doing that. I'm not sure on Family Dollar, but I know Dollar General is already doing that, it was in their policy.
It's not that big a change, I don't think that should affect that much.
The question also came in about optometrist offices and dental offices, and what's, and veterinarian offices, what those statuses are.
They are actually essential businesses, and so those needs are still there, so.
It's a welfare thing, it's health and welfare.
Yeah, that's what it falls under, the health and welfare section, so, anyway.
I think some places that are essential businesses are preferring appointments where they do not have more than 10 people at a time, and they don't know who's coming in.
Right.
Things of that nature.
Yeah.
What about travel into areas that are on a mandate?
There's really no, no way to...
Well, let me tell you...
Please stay home, that's it.
Yeah, actually Branson on the call yesterday said they are actually stopping some people, and they are going into some businesses that are considered non-essential right now because they are on a mandate and in close, having them close.
They're stopping them on 65?
No, I don't know that they said on 65, they just said within their city, yeah. So they didn't really give any specifics on that, so.
There were a lot of people coming from Springfield that couldn't get supplies that were coming to Branson also to Forsyth.
Oh, yeah.
Because they weren't able to do in Springfield.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's continuing to happen a lot, but it was happening.
And I had to wonder, I've got a daughter in Springfield, I wanted to go to my daughter's and do that.
Sure. Yep.
I think it says for family, you can, yeah, so.
Would you clarify some of this?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that's, we can't say anything between counties and...
Right, but I, they had a big press comp, and I think it's publicized on the, on either KY3 or one of those sites, they actually put their conference on there and question and answer that was on there too.
Do you know when that was?
Huh?
Do you know when that was?
It was just, what, two days ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
It's the same one I saw, they didn't say a whole lot about issues like we're talking about.
Okay, you might look again, cause I, and just see, anyway, if there's, did you got, did you hear anything on that?
No, I wasn't on the conference call that they had open, but they were just going over the ordinance and what it covered and what it didn't cover, and to call the county if you had questions, the health department, call the city if you had questions on what you could and couldn't do. So that's what they were pretty much saying, and they have a copy of ordinance up on their page too, so.
Yeah, I bet if you looked at the ordinance, it would probably state in there the specifics of that, and, anyway.
But they are encouraging as little travel between counties as possible to have a stay-out orders to prevent the spread, because even though you didn't show signs, you could pick it up from family and take it back to your county, which then starts a bigger issue later on. They did that for New York as well as California, if you traveled in the past 15 days from there to self-quarantine as well.
Yeah.
So they're advising any travel you do to those type of areas, quarantine yourself when you get home. And make sure you don't have that kind of spread.
Yeah, yeah. I think that what the concern of the commission was that, or Tannehill County Health Department, I should say, she was voicing at least some of them, is that they've seen where some from Kansas City and St. Louis have been traveling down here to, because they don't wanna be near it there, so they're traveling down here, and so, well, they could be, you know, you don't know if they, if they could've touched something somewhere along the way and carried it, you know, in too. So that was concerning, that's kind of why they were wanting to get this commission together and actually make some man, you know, try to put this out that we are at, Tannehill County is a stay-at-home right now, so, anyway. Anyone else have any questions?
Do you know when the county is planning on approving the final draft? Is that gonna be at Monday's meeting, or are they discussing it?
It's, that's a good question, they were trying to get it into place by the end of the day tomorrow, but it's, we don't, not for sure yet. Like I said, and this is a draft copy, and, and I just got information just a little bit before we started that Central Tannehill County Fire Department was joining in on it also, so. It just more are joining in as they see it, and, anyway, parts of the county, just everybody's trying to do the same thing.
And where will this information be posted, when it...
We will post it once it's done, once it's...
We will post it where?
On our city website, or actually on our city website and our city Facebook also. Ms. Husketh has been running the city Facebook, and I just keep giving her all the information to post, and she's been posting it, so. Or yeah, we'll have copies here too, if you wanna drive, through the drive-up window.
Okay.
When they get it all.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, grab it here, that'd probably be the best thing.
Yeah, probably would, so.
Is there any reason that the fire department, they've got that little scrolling thing going out here? Is there any reason when that's been done that they couldn't put that on there?
It's a possibility, we can talk to them and see, yeah, absolutely.
That would notify them.
Yeah, it would, as you're coming into town, this is, yeah, we are stay-at-home, so, that's a good idea.
Great idea.
Yeah, absolutely.
I can go ahead and post that, of course, I can just do, I can keep it at the top of the page on our scroll reel too.
Perfect.
So that way that's up there for everybody to see.
Could it be sent to KY3 news?
When it's done, that's up to the commission to do. And that would be the county officials, so we'll see what they say, okay?
All right. And as I understand this, this is not necessarily addressing schools because the schools are...
They're already...
...addressing themselves.
They are, we, we left the schools out of it because they are already taking care of that themselves.
And are the schools shut down for the year?
They are, no, not for the year, till April 24th, yeah.
So does Tannehill County, when they put their mandate in, that will encompass the whole city, every city?
It's every city that's on here.
Okay, okay.
That's why we are coming together today to support it, so, it's every city that is in support of it.
And then I'm to assume that would include anyone not in any city limits but are living in the county also, right?
Correct. So, yeah, it's pretty much, it ends up being almost every city, Branson, like I said, they, they're ahead of us already with the mandate part, so, but it ends up being, it's City of Rockaway, the Village of Marion Woods, City of Hollister, the, along with us, the Tannehill County, Office of Emergency Management, Tannehill County Health Department, Western Tannehill County Fire Protection District, it's, and like I said, Central is also going in there too.
How about Pro-Tam Cedar Group and Rutter?
That is a good question, not anyone has said anything about those, that's a good question.
We have showings out in those areas, in fact, we've sold something and that's where they'll be closing. So we have people going into those areas, we would like to be able to notify them if they're in on this or not.
Well, the county commission establishes the whole county.
Right, I know.
They will be either way.
Yeah, yeah, true.
They will be under the proclamation.
Yep.
If they're not enlisted, they would be under the proclamation?
Yeah, because they are still part of Tannehill County.
So they would just take Tannehill County as a whole to put it on there to include anybody that they may have missed, am I catching that correctly?
Yes, or they didn't have anyone available to be part of the process, yes, necessarily.
Cause they're more, less, they're not even villages, they're just townships.
Yeah, there are.
Yeah, I think, let's see...
That would be up to the county.
Bull Creek Village, I think.
Bull Creek's not on there?
Yeah, no, it's not on there, but I think they were in the, yeah, they were on, in the meeting.
So maybe we'll have a more complete list once it's made official.
Anyway, like I said, this is a draft and we are...
So if you know people out in those areas, you might ask them if they're interested in, you know, to contact the county to get, to get involved with it if they're, I don't know what difference it makes.
Well, they have to see the creek.
I'll ask Brandon, maybe, yeah. I'll ask Brandon, maybe, yeah, Travis, or one of them on there, Jonas, and see if any of them have, they've contacted Pro Tem and Cedar Creek, so.
Well, we've got Pro Tem, Cedar Creek, Tanneyville, Bradenville. There's a bunch of towns up that way that need attention in this. But as a Realtor, I'd like to be able to post somewhere that...
They may have been invited to this and then didn't respond, so it's, I can't answer for it.
But they could answer that question.
Actually, the Tanney County Health Department, Lisa Marshall.
Well, they're not having governments over any of those towns.
Right.
They have fire departments that...
Right.
So, yeah, I wouldn't think that they would...
Yeah, they may not have...
They may not have, yeah, they may not. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah.
I, I think that the Eastern Tanney County Fire Departments pretty much are cohesive, and they include each other. But we have some towns out there that do not have fire departments.
Well, it's, you know, it's the, they're all in the county. They're all affected.
Juror, go for the juror.
I make the motion, Judge.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here, asking questions.